I know he went to St. John's, too.
Yeah.
That's where he played college.
Yeah, I think he has the paper.
He's at the University of St. John's. That's the guy.
But that's who I get to work with.
Andres, yep.
I had Andres.
Close enough.
Andres, I kept getting friends to go there. No, Omar does all the kids talk and all that.
He's got him. But they didn't, he didn't recognize his name?
My friend from Columbia, I didn't talk to him.
Alright.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
My friend from Columbia did.
Oh, okay. It's gotta be a common name, Andres Gomez.
It's like Smith up here.
You should meet your friend Omar, though, if he's coordinating a lot of the USO.
How are you?
I'll have to maybe get his number or exchange contact information.
You guys ready? Mike? Uh... Well, they're gonna, they gotta do their presentation. We've got a couple other things to do first, so might as well leave it there for now. I'll, I'll announce again during the course.
I can move it over to that table. I'm gonna do that, so Omar.
Yeah, why don't we do that? This way they're not bothering the presentation. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to have everyone in the council chambers to set their cellphones to vibrate or shut them off for this evening out of courtesy to the speakers. The Stratford zoning commission is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard in this session. Let's see here. Be it noted that, for the record, that Ms. Manos is sitting in for Stephanie Phillips and the rest are regular members. Wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM and be continued at another date, which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at a continued public hearing. For the, for the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on January 12th, 2019, and on January 19th, 2019. These properties were duly posted on January 16th, 2019. Ms. Manos, if you could read the first petition, please?
2336 Barnum Avenue, petition of Esteban de la Cruz, seeking approval of liquor location to establish a Class G grocery beer permit in a CA zone.
Petitioner present, please? Just step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman and members, my name is Edmund J. Ramos. I was called today by Mr. Esteban de la Cruz. He had an emergency as a result of which he had to go to his country. And he asked me if I would appear here to see whether or not it was possible to go forward. If not, he wanted to find out whether or not it was possible to get a continuance.
Yeah, if you're, he's represent, you're representing him and you can answer our questions.
I will try my best. I reviewed the file and I will do my best to answer whatever questions you may have.
Okay, if you want to continue, or you can represent him, we'll let it continue.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. From my quick review of the file, I noticed that there was one objection to the application. And that was by someone in that neighborhood, one who had received notice. And they indicated that there was, there were people around the store, drunken people around the store. And I find that so hard to believe because he does not now have a permit. And so he was not able to sell any alcoholic beverages. So if there were any people around there drunk, they had to be get drunk from some other source because he wasn't able to sell the liquor. That is my only comment. I have nothing else. I reviewed the record and he submitted all of the necessary documents and paperwork. And he's tried hard and he's been working hard trying to make a life. And he has the store there and he's put in a lot of time and effort. And he's simply trying to improve the products that he knows that would sell and keep him in business.
Excuse me one minute. We seem to have a little bit of a issue here and maybe the three minutes that we've spent on it so far would probably be enough. You're required, or he was required, to send out notice to the neighbors?
Yes.
And apparently, you do have them?
Who do I give these to?
What, what was the date on those that they were sent out? And the, the reason I bring this up is because we do have a complaint that several of the neighbors who lived there immediately.
Had not received the notice.
Have not received any. I hate to do this, but why don't we continue it to next month and have him do the whole process over again? Because they had to be, you know, to the butters by 14 days prior to today's hearing. And it just, too many things could go wrong with this. And it'll give him the opportunity to be here and speak to us himself.
I thank you very much for your consideration and I would...
Yeah, we're gonna give you these back.
It's only fair, yes, if they were not sent out properly.
Okay, yeah.
And just to clarify, they need to be sent out no later than 14 days prior to the next public...
Prior to the hearing.
Next public hearing.
Okay, do you expect him back in the country?
I really don't know, sir. I don't know the...
Okay.
Obviously, it had to be a serious emergency for him to leave so abruptly.
All right, well, we'll leave it up to you to have communication within that.
So I will, I will do my best to be in contact with him.
Okay.
And let him know that it was continued and I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Silhavy, if you could read item...
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to continue that item at this point?
Probably.
So I move to continue item one to February 27th, I believe is our next meeting?
Motion by Mr. Silhavy, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Items...
Two, three, four?
Two, three, four. Look like they're together, yes.
Okay. Item two, text amendment, petition of Rogalas LLC, seeking to amend the zoning regulations by creating a new Section 32 titled Orin Oak Village District. Item three, 170 Orin Oak Lane and 1180 James Farm Road, petition of Rogalas LLC, seeking to change the zone from an RS1 to the proposed Orin Oak Village District. Item four, 170 Orin Oak Lane and 1180 James Farm Road, petition of Rogalas LLC, seeing a site plan review to construct an affordable housing development on 25, of 25 single-family homes pursuant to Section 8-30G of the Connecticut general statutes on a property located in an RS1 zone. An erosion and sediment control application has also been submitted for review.
Mr. Bellis, the floor is yours.
Thank you all. For the record, I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis and I represent the applicant of Rogalas. I'm gonna be a little brief tonight. I just had surgery last, yesterday on my throat. But I, I have my remarks and I'll, I'll put them in into the record as well. In case you can't hear me, just let me know and I'll try to keep my voice up. Let me start by stating that my client is Rogalas LLC, which is a contract purchaser of the Sikelsky piece. Mr. Sikelsky is the owner along James Farm Road and a portion of the Bluebird Prestige lot. This is what we have here as parcel two. I just want to tell this commission that the Rogalas withdrew its subdivision application, that was before your planning commission, after the Supreme Court recently decided the KD decision, which determined that since no new lot line is being created, the change in a property boundary line is a lot line adjustment and not a subdivision. Both the town administrator and town council attorney Florrick agreed that if this board were to approve this application, then Rogalas would file a lot line adjustment map on the land records. So what does that mean? This parcel is owned by Mr. Sikelsky right now. Bluebird Prestige owns this parcel. This line would be eliminated and this line would be put in. That's called a lot line adjustment according to the Supreme Court because you only have one, two lots now and you'll only have one, two lots after. So there's no new lot created. I should also point out that the adjacent parcel, what I've called parcel one here, is still owned by Bluebird and Rogalas. My client is not a contract purchaser of that lot. Bluebird is appealing a wetlands decision for that, for the development of that lot. That's what I have here as parcel number one. So that's not anything to do with us tonight. So what am I here for? I guess you all kind of know. It's a request for a zone change and an affordable housing set aside development for 25 single houses under 8-30G. If you don't remember, the set aside is where you take 30% of the homes and they're at a little bit below the fair market value under the statute, 80% and 60%. The rest of them are fair market value. So I have to designate someone who's going to be responsible for the, what we call the administration of the affordable housing plan. And that designee is RAGS, R-A-G-S-1 LLC. Now Stratford has, as you all know, an affordable housing section in its regulations. And under 5.43, you allow a maximum of 3.5 affordable units per acre. So this plan proposes 9.25 units per acre. This application helps increase the number of affordable units in town and I think it also blends in with the existing single-family homes in the neighborhood. These are, these look like single-family houses. They have their own driveway, they have their own garage. They would be condominium-style community or homeowners association is probably more aptly the way to say it. But the homes would be owned by individuals. So the homeowners association would be responsible for the private, plowing the private road and those kinds of things. The plan would increase the affordable units by eight under your, there would be eight more affordable units. Obviously, this neighborhood is a residential zone. The plan complies with the town of Stratford's storm management plan, your newest one, which was the effective, I think it's July 1, 2017. Now, in, if you read the statute 8-30G, it says that in, in applying for an affordable housing application, we have to include a conceptual site plan. We have to show the arrangement of the units on the property, the roads and traffic circulations, the sewage and the water supply. But I want to tell you that we went way above that. We also comply with your new Section 20, which is a site plan. So I'm gonna give you everything that you would need to see for a site plan. You'll have an A2 survey, you'll have an overall site plan, we're gonna give you an erosion control plan, a landscape plan, a grading plan, a fire access profile. We're gonna show you where the sanitary sewer and public water come from. There'll be architectural floor plans and exterior elevations. I'm just gonna touch on it briefly. I know that Jay always writes me and tells me that my, that this application constitutes spot zoning. I disagree with him on that, on that, for this parcel. I think that we're reclassifying a land and in this case, you have to have a change, if you, if it is spot zoning, would be a change in a very small area and a change that's not in harmony with the comprehensive plan. And I've cited a couple cases. In this case, we have 2.75 acres. And in the second part of that is, I think that there are parts of this plan that does comply with these comprehensive plan of development. I think we all know that Stratford's population is continuing to age and it's older than most communities around it. It has a higher concentration of residents at a retirement age, which may indicate a need for affordable housing that's geared towards an older fixed income population. Access to affordable housing options has been an ongoing concern in your town. I think this application encourages more diverse and affordable living opportunities. That was also one of the goals in the conservation plan. Obviously, that adds to the affordable housing stock. Right now, you'll see from the exempt list that Stratford's not exempt, you don't have the 10% that you need. I think you're around 6%, but it's, I'll hand it out as a handout. There are regulations that, your current regulations do allow affordable housing complexes in the RS zone. And this is an RS1 zone. So for all those reasons and the cases that I've cited, I don't believe it is spot zoning. You're acting in a legislative capacity to change the zone and allow this specific text amendment, which would permit 25 single-family homes on this parcel. I think it's within your powers. I think it's in accordance with the comprehensive plan and reasonably related to the normal police power that you have under 8-2. I have some exhibits that I'm gonna submit to you and I'll just do them very quickly. The certified mailings of the notice, I'm gonna call that Exhibit A. I'm calling the non-exempt municipality list Exhibit B. And... I don't wanna short ya. 6.21, Stratford's at 6.21. I have, I have the Rogalas contracts to purchase this property. And I'm gonna call that Exhibit C. One of the contracts is with Michael Sikelsky and the other's with Bluebird Prestige. I have the legal description. We'll call that Exhibit D. I also have the town clerk, receipted copies of the petition for the zone change and text amendment. You guys used to file that, but now you make the applicants file it with the town clerk. So I called that Exhibit E. And then I have the property management information. We'll call that F. That's that RAGS1 LLC. I've given you the formation documents, signed by my client, Mr. Joseph Rogalas. So I have two witnesses tonight. I have Manny Silva from Rose Tizzo. He's an engineer and he'll testify as to the engineering and site plan, along with the architectural designs of these single-family homes prepared by the architect Pat Rose. I also have another engineer, Kermit Hua, who will testify as to the traffic, as a traffic consultant. And I just have, again, a little legal thing again. I just want to point out that Judge Radcliffe had recently ruled that there's no setback area to make general evaluations of whether an activity is appropriate or suitable if it's just close in proximity to a wetland area. And that case is Farmer versus Easton, 66 Con Law Report, page 179. And he decided that case in June 14, 2018. In this case, there's a drainage ditch on the golf course. Orin Oak Golf LLC, that is outside the upland review area of this development. So consequently, there is no need for this applicant to appear before the wetlands commission and we have not done so. And Manny will explain where that upland review area is. So... I'll just give you my remarks in case you couldn't hear me. I appreciate you listening to me. And I'm just gonna have Manny and Mr. Hua go next. Are there any questions of me before I turn it over to them?
Any questions from the commission for Mr. Bellis? Doesn't look like it at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Manny Silva.
Good evening. Manny Silva from Rose Tizzo and Company, registered civil engineer in the state of Connecticut. There was some comments last week from the engineering department and conservation. So there was some revisions done. I'm just gonna pass out reduced copies to the commission and... Sorry. As you guys know, I like to be on the move. So what we have here is Attorney Bellis explained is two parcels. This is the survey and our lot line revision. Currently, Mr., there's a single-family house on 111, or 1180 James Farm Road, as you can see here with a garage and a driveway of the James Farm Road. And this parcel here is 170 Orin Oak Lane with a driveway here, the dwellings here with some sheds here in the back. And then here's that wetland area, this on the other side of the firehouse. I could actually show you where the building is located here on SP 21. So you could see here, just kind of to orient everyone, this is the firehouse on Orin Oak Lane. This is where that existing house is right now. And that wetland is actually on the other side of the parking lot and the building of the firehouse. And as you can see, the upland review area line is just inboard of the relocated property line for our development here. And that's 250 feet from the drainage channel here where the, has some flagged wetlands. So basically, what we want to do is relocate this property line from here to back here as the contract purchaser and Mr. Bellis had detailed. And what we'd like to do is construct 25 single-family homes. As you can see here, what we have is a driveway coming in off of James Farm Road. There is a mailbox pull-off here for, for the mailbox cluster for the 25 units. And then what you'll have is a driveway with a two-car garage for each unit. So each unit will have two, two cars parked inside the garage and they'll have the opportunity to park two cars in front of the garage. That space there is 20 by, 20, 20 by 20, I think it's a, I'm sorry, drawing a blank here on the actual length of the driveways, but they're long enough to park two cars in front of each, each garage. Each unit has a sidewalk that comes out and interconnects all the units throughout the development. There's a location here for trash and recycling enclosure. That's where the, everyone in the community comes and brings their trash. As you can see also on SP 1, we have the fire truck from the town of Stratford, their largest fire truck, turning radius is coming in. And that's basically how we came up with these radii's here, as you can see, coming around. Obviously, it's open to any kind of comment from the fire marshal, will make any adjustments that he would like. We are showing right now two fire hydrants onsite. If he'd like more, we'd add, we'd add more. It's not an issue. And so that's basically a site plan. The, the town engineer had some, had a comment on that, all the, to make sure that all the sidewalks are accessible. And of course, we will put handicap ramps on all the sidewalks that interface a driveway or a driveway. As you can see here, we actually call out there to make sure that they're all accessible. So on that note about the fire trucks, as you can see, the fire truck come in, turn around and come right back out. So we'll go on to the grading utility plan. The site itself is relatively flat. The only real grading happens is in this area here where the slope starts to drop off towards the wetland area. And what we, what we've done, we've mimicked basically the natural topography, except for in this area, we're filling it a little bit so that drainage can flow into our system. As you can see here, we have some catch basins and some catch basins here that goes into a downstream defender, which is a, a unit that separates out oils and grit out of the stormwater. Basically, it's like a filter and it uses vortex vertices to do that. That then goes into a underground gallery system, which is about 700 lineal feet of gallery. And with, with that design, we have, we have a reduction in runoff from the existing condition of 5% at the five-year storm, four and a half at the 10-year storm, 10% at the 25-year storm, 22% at the 50-year storm and half a percent, or 0.6% at the 100-year storm. So we've actually, per the engineering department, the conservation, we went above and, above the town's requirements of 25-year storm, we actually designed and calculated for up to the 100-year storm. So basically, what happens is the rain falls onto the property, there's more impervious area than there was before. So what we have to do is collect that, treat it, and then try to store it in, in the ground, cool it off, and then infiltrate it into the ground so it further filters and doesn't go downstream. And it'll actually mitigate flooding, it won't increase it, it'll actually reduce flooding downstream. Because we are reducing the amount of runoff that's there today that goes onto James Farm Road. So we have a control structure here. And basically, what that is, is that it's a little weir wall that stops the water from leaving the gallery system. And there's only a 12-inch hole in the bottom of it that'll let water leak out over time so that the gallery system is completely empty for the next storm in 72 hours. Okay? And then you can stop me if you have any questions, by the way. So the, there is a sewer, there is a sewer connection, onsite sewer, that goes to a pump, pump station here because there is no sewers in James Farm Road. Go ahead and hear the next one. It goes to a force main that comes around. The town engineer also commented that he'd rather see the force main in the center of the, we had it in the shoulder, he likes to see it in the center of the road. And that's subject to a WPCA permit. And that's something that we'll do once we figure out what's the conclude, or the, once we know what the, if there is a project to be had. And so that will have a PVC force main that comes around with check valves in front of every, every other property. And that's so that in the future, if that, those properties want to come into it, they could just come into it with a Y and there's just a check valve there to kind of shut it off so they can connect in. And then they could have a pump of their own that forces it in and goes around. and goes around to a gravity sewer, which is in Orin Oak Lane here, in front of, basically in front of one seventy. We also have city water coming off of James Farm Road, which will be servicing the units and the fire hydrants. The grading, basically, we tried to, we tried to mimic the existing topography. So basically, right now, this site is somewhat lower than this southerly site so that we put a swale in here, because we're going to cut down for this new driveway. And that will collect that water from off of that neighboring property as it is today and just channel it along our property. And we also did that here where we, we tried, we kept our, with a little berm here, we kept the water that's from our property on our property and not discharging it to the neighbors, as it does right now. So we're actually reducing that. Mitigating that situation. So next is the soil erosion control plan. If you've seen a lot of these. Basically, we have an anti-tracking pad here at the entrance. That's basically a big pad of large stones to knock off any mud off of any trucks that are coming off the site so it doesn't track it into James Farm Road. We have a silt fence around the whole property to not just act as a, as a control to stop any silt from leaving the property, but also as a limit of disturbance that it'll be staked out and the contractor will know not to go any further than that. The catch basins that are proposed will be, will be fitted with silt sacks, which are these sacks that filter out the water before it gets into the catch basin so that when you have a rainstorm during a non-stable, when the soil isn't stabilized, basically when it's mud and it runs into these basins, gets caught. And then once we have everything stabilized, grass paved, we then pull those silt sacks out and the units are basically new and are ready to function as designed versus having, you know, starting day one when this opens, having all their units full of silt. And so that's why we use silt sacks. And we'll have that on all the, all the basins. Going on. We have a landscaping plan. We have some ornamental trees. A paper that doesn't want to go up. There you go. So we have some shade trees along the, along the entrance and along James Farm Road here. We have some red maples and London plane trees going along here, flanking the perimeter of the property. We have some ground cover, which is English used. It's like a, an evergreen bush that grows close to the ground and spreads out wide versus up. And then we'll have some Austrian pines here to screen the dumpster enclosure where the trash and the recycling is collected. And that's basically that. Then I'll just go to the details. So here's some details, basically, of the catch basins with the sumps that we anticipate, the cleanouts that we're going to use for the gallery system. So we have cleanouts on top of it so we can actually observe any kind of, if there's any sediment inside the galleries, which there shouldn't be because the downstream defender should catch that all before it goes to the galleries. That's why we put that ahead of the gallery. It's like a treatment train. We filter everything out first, and then we try to infiltrate it into the ground. And that will prolong the life of the gallery system and allow it to infiltrate well into the future without any maintenance. But we do have a maintenance plan per the engineering requirements on SP two about the scheduling of cleaning the galleries, cleaning the units, cleaning the, cleaning the downstream defender and the catch basins. Here's the downstream defender detail. The pump system for the sewer galleries. And then the sewer manholes that we have on-site just for the collection. Again, here's that silt sack detail. It's basically a geofabric that goes into the catch basin and catches all the mud and particulates and just lets the water flow through. And then, once construction is done and everything's paved and stabilized, we pull it out and the catch basin is clean. So Pat Rose couldn't be here today. He's down, he's in another hearing. So I'm going to go over the floor plan here on A one oh one. As you can see, it's a two-car garage, the storage unit in the back, mechanical room, a little laundry. And then the main entrance has an entrance from the garage in out front with a stairway up to the second floor. On the second floor, you have a little hallway with a half bathroom, a living room, dining room, U-shaped kitchen. That's about ten by ten. And then on, then we go one, up one more floor, you'll have a three-bedroom unit. The bedrooms range from eleven to all the way up to thirteen feet in dimension. Full bathroom up top, walk-in closet, full bathroom in the master suite, the master bedroom with a smaller walk-in closet. And then I'll go on to one oh two, which shows you the elevation. So basically, what we wanted to do is mimic the single-family style, or feel, or view, or the area. So what we have is clapboard siding with bay windows, shutters, and then a little, a little roof over the entrance. Here's your two-car garage. And we have wood shingles up on top to kind of break up the massing of the building, or the house. And then, like I said, a little porch here with a, some rails up front. And that's the presentation of the drawings. Another thing is the, I did respond in writing to the engineering comments and the conservation. I'm not going to do what I usually do, go one by, down line by line. I don't think it's, I'll just submit them for the record. And then I also will submit for the record a revised drainage plan, which includes the fifty and the hundred-year storms. Again, no need to read it, right? There you go. And that's, and I'll turn it over to Kermit for the traffic unless there's some questions for me right now.
Any questions from the commission, Mr. Henrich?
Snow removal.
So, snow removal. On sites like this, we just have to have, we basically provide a temporary snow shelf, basically, in this area here. And then, once it accumulates, just like any other community like this, we'll have to truck it offsite. Once it becomes, you know, if there's a huge snowstorm, yeah, you're going to have to truck it off, just like other, similar developments. Thank you for the question.
Mr. Silhavy?
Couple of questions. The proposed regulation that we were provided with, and unfortunately, I've got so much paper, it's hard to keep track sometimes.
Sorry.
No. I believe it said, it calls for up to one hundred cars on the property. Is that correct?
So we have twenty-five units. And so technically, if, in an event, say like Thanksgiving or something like that, right? You can have four cars per unit, so twenty-five times four is a hundred. That's just basically how that math worked out.
So the garages in there, are they two-car garages or one-car?
Correct, two-car.
Two cars, two on the driveway pad. And I'm assuming that then there's no other additional area for guest parking? That's, that would be?
Correct. The guest parking is the two spaces in front of the garage.
Hundred cars, okay. Now, the exit to James Farm Road from the property. Right there, yeah. Okay. How is that configured? Because it's obviously not at an intersection. So that particular area of James Farm is a little on the tight side. So even just, I know, coming out of people's driveways in that area, it's fairly, there's, there's not much of a shoulder there. It's just the street, and then you're already on to the property itself, if I remember correctly. So how are you planning on configuring that? Are you, is there a buffer there to make sure that you can enter and exit the property safely?
I mean, we haven't done any, we haven't proposed any offsite improvements. But if that's something that engineering or this commission would, would like to see, like a turn lane or something like that, I think I'll have Kermit speak to that. But I think that the everyday traffic wouldn't warrant, say, like a turn lane or anything like that.
I don't think it could if you wanted to. There's enough room for that, right?
Right. So, right now, what we have is, is nearly a ninety-degree intersection with it. And you can see that closest intersection is here to Orin Oak Lane. And it's about, I want to say, it's at least three houses down, three properties down. So I think I'll let Kermit speak to the traffic. I don't want to step on him.
No, that's, that's fine. The, with the vegetation there, so it's basically, the property is essentially going to be clear-cut, and then you would put the new ornamental trees and shrubs in there. But most of the mature growth would be taken out, correct?
That's correct. Because of the way that the site's configured, I mean, there will be some, some areas, say, in here that we could probably try to save whatever growth is there. But I don't think there's too much along this, this property line here. There's some stone walls. But, and maybe along the golf course property, there's some, there's a pretty good patch of forest in there, or trees, between here and that fairway. But otherwise, no, because the way that it's configured to get that turnaround here for the fire trucks, you couldn't really save, like, create like a dense landscape area or natural.
Because I know there was an area of concern when the last time this project was before us, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Now, the area behind the existing house at one seventy Orin Oak.
Correct.
Okay. I'm confused. What's in the empty spot?
This here?
All the way to the top, yeah.
This is all, you know, it's all going to stay the way it is today, which is meadow. I think there's a meadow area and then some trees here in the corner.
Okay, when you say it's going to stay as it is today, so that, I, it is under your control, though? That's part of your, your, no?
No. I'll let, turn it over to Steve Bellis to answer that question.
Okay.
No, the own, the, my client Rogalas has a contract to purchase the Sikelsky piece.
Right.
And the other contract is to purchase parcel two. That's all his contract is for, so that's the twenty-five houses that I'm proposing. The owner of this parcel is Bluebird. That's not my client.
Okay.
So I, Mr. Rogalas doesn't have a contract to purchase parcel one.
Okay, so now, have you had any communications with Bluebird?
Have I?
Yeah, or what's, what's their position on this? And what I'm just curious about is,
I think I said in the beginning.
He's got now a very awkwardly shaped, very deep lot going all the way back up against yours.
Bluebird has a, has an application that was pending before the, your Wetlands Commission. And that is being, under, that's under appeal right now. Counsel and I are, so I don't know what's going to happen with that property. I can't comment on what's going to happen to that property in the future. I don't know.
Okay, so you could conceivably have quite a bit of buildings in a very small space.
Where's that?
Between the two different properties. Let's just say he would succeed on his appeal. Then you have twenty-five plus whatever they're looking for?
Well, right, I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what it is that they're proposing on that piece, other than the fact that now there's a single-family house here, that I do know.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, seeing none.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kermit.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Kermit Hua from KWH Enterprise LLC in Maridon, Connecticut. I'm a registered professional engineer in Connecticut. And I worked on the traffic study for this project. Here are five copies. The two questions raised, I think, let me just go ahead and address those. The first is the, two questions were, were raised when, in response to Manny's presentation. One is about the one hundred car parking capacity on the site. I, one thing I want to mention is, you know, as far as the peak trips, especially during peak hour, during weekday peak hours, in other words, the traffic from the site is not necessarily correlated with the number of parking spaces on the site. The parking spaces on the site, one hundred spaces in the garage and in front of the garage, you know, give us enough buffer parking capacity, if you, if you will. As I will present later, the net traffic impact, or net, net tra, number of trips generated by these developments are not necessarily related to that one hundred parking spaces, especially during peak hours. The trips for this development is much, much lower than one hundred, that number. The second issue was raised, was the, the configuration of the driveway on James Farm Road. I looked at the site plan prepared by Rose Tizzo Associates. And I, I feel the driveway configuration is adequate for this development. There is no need, it's not justified, certainly not justified by traffic, and not justified from a design perspective to add additional lanes on James Farm Road for this small development. One thing you should be careful is, you know, if we use DOT design criteria as a guide, what they require typically, the largest vehicles for this kind of development is a W, I'm sorry, SU thirty turning truck. In other words, UPS trucks you see day in, day out. The DOT requirement for these kind of a location is, the SU thirty truck, they can cross the central line of the driveway, but they don't recommend crossing the central line of the road itself. In other words, if you want, the SU thirty truck want to enter and exit the site, they can cross the central line of the driveway itself, but not a central line of the street. As long as we can meet that criteria, then the design of the driveway is adequate. In this case, I think we meet this criteria. Obviously, if the town engineer or, you know, planners feel we need larger turning radius, we absolutely can do that. But as far as the configuration, especially, when I say configuration, I'm talking about the number of lanes on James Farm Road and on the driveway itself. In my opinion, they are adequate. So about the traffic study, what we did is, we looked at the three intersections along James, three, main intersections along James Farm Road. To the north is the intersection with Armstrong Road in Shelton, then the Orin Oak Lane, just south of this site, and then Chapel Street to the south. So that covers about a little bit over two-mile stretch of James Farm Road. We looked at operation, a traffic operation during peak hours at these three intersections. And for the future build condition, we looked at the driveway location on James Farm Road. As far as the net impact, as I said, said, you know, during peak hours, we are mainly concerned about weekday morning and weekday afternoon peak hours because, you know, in our opinion, this is the busiest peak hours, you know, that's likely driver's experience on James Farm Road. So during these two peak hours, currently, all these three intersections I mentioned, Armstrong, Orin Oak, and the Chapel are operating at level of service A, B, or C, you know, with very short average delay. In other words, traffic is operating satisfactorily during the busiest peak hours at these three intersections on James Farm Road. And we also looked at no build condition. In other words, consider the, the annual growth between now and twenty twenty-one, we assumed is the build year for this project. We compared no build condition and the build condition. The level of service for these two conditions will be the same. In other words, we will not trigger any changes in level of service at all these three intersections on James Farm Road. As an example, you know, just give you a picture of how, what's the net impact of this project is of these twenty-four units. I looked at the intersection of James Farm Road and Orin Oak Lane. For the morning peak hour, the intersection, average delay for the intersection is eight point eight seconds. With this project, it will increase to eight point nine seconds average, so increasing in zero point one second. For the weekday afternoon peak hour, it will increase from fourteen point zero seconds to fourteen point two seconds. That is an increase of zero point two second for each car traveling through this intersection as a result of these forty, twenty-five unit development. By the way, if I haven't mentioned previously, the net trips generated during those AM and PM peak hours are nineteen trips during the morning peak hour and twenty-five trips during the afternoon peak hours, peak hour for these twenty-five houses. So as you'll see, you know, as an example, I gave you for the intersection of Orin Oak and James Farm Road, the net traffic impact of these twenty-four, twenty-five houses will be The net traffic impact of these, these 24, 25 houses will be negligible and that's supported by the traffic analysis. I also looked at the traffic accidents on James Farm Road, uh, from the Shelton Town Line all the way to the intersection of Chapel Street. That's about, that is about a two mile stretch of roadway over a six-year period all the way until December 2018. The records show only 28 accidents occurred on these two mile stretch of James Farm Road. That is over, that's average about a little bit over four, uh, four accidents per year for these two mile stretch. And among these 28 accidents, um, just because the traffic on James Farm Road is so low, most of the accidents are, you know, people hitting curbs or hitting roadside objects. That's, 13 of the accidents involved fixed objects, in other words, trees, you know, guardrails, uh, curbs, uh, that sort. It's not between vehicles. On top of that, four of the objects were with the, with moving, moving objects, in other words, deers, you know, animals and forth. So 13 plus four is 17, so 17 out of the 28 accidents did not involve any, they are single car accidents. In other words, one car with other objects, either deers or fixed objects, roadside fixed objects. And this gives you a picture that it is really a relatively low volume, um, road. And, uh, given that we have only a little bit over four accidents per year over a two mile stretch of road. We don't really see any major concerns based on this, about traffic safety based on these accident records. So again, in conclusion, this is a very low traffic generator. It's net traffic impact will be very negligible based on our analysis of the peak hour operations of the intersections along James Farm Road. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the commission? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bellis?
Yes, in, uh, in conclusion, I just want to let the board, remind the board that under 8-30G, if there is a change that the board feels would be a reasonable change, then, uh, then it can be accomplished the same purpose. Then that can be incorporated and you certainly can ask us to do that. Um, and we'd be willing to work with the commission on trying to get that accomplished. So, um, if there's anything that, um, that the commission feels that could be accommodated with a reasonable change, please just let me know. That's all. Otherwise, that's all that I have for now. I, I see that the room is full, so I'm going to sit down. And, uh, I'll let, I'll let the opposition speak. And if, as long as you can provide me with time for a rebuttal after they put on whatever they, whatever they choose to put on, that's all I ask.
Yes, no problem.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Uh, just a reminder to anybody, we have a sign up sheet over in the far corner for anyone who would like to speak either for or against when I call you up. So if you want to sign up now and we will continue.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Solhavy?
Can I just ask Attorney Bellis to come back up? I have just two more questions. The, the land, having gone through this a couple of times here. The land obviously there is, is heavily, heavily, lots of rocks there.
Lots of what?
Very rocky up there.
Okay.
Have your, has your firm done any analysis to see if blasting would be required to clear the site?
I know that under, uh, both under state statute, the Fire Marshal's in charge of any and all blasting. And, uh, they have to, there's, there's a statute and he's, and he's the one in charge of that. Any neighbors would have to be notified. They'd have to do, they would have to do tests if there is any blasting. They'd have to be tested.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, have you analyzed the composition of the site to see if you suspect that it's going to be required?
I don't know whether blasting is going to be required.
Okay.
Lately, um, a lot of the developers have been using a hammer in lieu of blasting. So I guess it really depends, you know, until you start scraping off the topsoil, see what you have.
Have you done any analysis because the area over there has a very active and higher than normal, at least I would consider it, water table? And I know that some of the places in the area, actually some of the more south of Orin Oak Lane had an issue back in the 90s when I was on the town council with contamination in the water supply in the wells. So I'm just wondering if you've had, done any hydrological analysis to see if disturbing that area is going to cause any interruptions to the water table?
I know that Manny did in his drainage report, he addresses putting in the galleys and putting in those defenders. I, I am aware of what you're talking about and that's not near this project. I don't think there's going to be a problem with any kind of contamination whatsoever. I think the flooding that you're talking about is down further.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Uh, first speaker, Stephanie Fianz?
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Fianz. It's a long I. Sorry, sir.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I reviewed what was available from your department, B and Z, just before the December meeting was to be taking place. And I understand that was canceled. So a lot of the specifics that was spoken to here tonight were not available to me. The two parcels, 1.3, 1.9 acre sites, I can see why this group would have questions on the sideline and rear yard just because of the dimension itself. This subdivision, of course, would have, would be 25 single family homes, eight of which, only eight of which are affordable. To me, in looking at the scheme and the way they're laid out, the number of 960 square feet for each of these three bedroom houses, 960 square feet bothered me. I said, 960 square feet. And I kept saying that. I said, this has got to be a cabin. This is going to be a very tall cabin for 960 square feet and three bedrooms. So I questioned that. This seems to be too many, too small. And its layout just gives me a campsite type feeling with, with the design. I don't see it feasible. Yes, there are sewers in the plan, but I see the drain on the town for this. I, I trust this group will, will do diligence and look at all of it for what the town gains. And equally important is what it would lose with this. A couple of comments from tonight. Four accidents per year, one is enough. One should put the lights on for people here. As it is now in just making the drive out today, I noticed on James Farm, there's still a lot of ice collection going towards that Shelton line, and that's just the nature of the topography there. I question whether more being added and the way the land is laid out there for this development, whether more might be added to that. Again, uh, low traffic generation, I don't know. It's quite busy during holiday time. I find it, the few times that I'm out at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, that it's, it's quite busy. And I'm just running over to Holly Lane for a prescription stop or whatever. I guess that probably would not be objectionable. But I asked this group to really look at both the pros and cons of all of this for the people who currently live in that area as well as the possibility of, you know, how you're going to add 25 more units. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Marikanda?
Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Marikanda. I live at 115 Surrey Lane, which is just across Orin Oak Golf Course from this proposal. I'm also a vice chair of the Roosevelt Forest Commission. So I'd just like to take a second and thank you for the time that you put in in handling our zoning matters. I lived at 115 Surrey Lane from 1968 till about 2000 and was fortunate enough to just recently move back there. And I have to say that I was, I'm, I'm appalled at the traffic situation now in this neighborhood. Especially having the sight of being away for a few years and moving back to it. Cars stacked up to the top of Orin Oak Hill. Cars a quarter mile deep waiting to turn on James Farm onto Orin Oak. You know, we heard some interesting numbers about numbers of trips and this and that. We all know in today's day and age, it's one car per person. So take however many people are going to move into this, multiply that by one car per person. That's what you're going to add to this neighborhood in a way of vehicular traffic, not some fancy numbers. That aside, this is still a beautiful neighborhood to live in, absolutely beautiful. Probably, in my opinion, the most beautiful neighborhood in town. And it is beautiful because it's zoned properly. It's RS1, it's RS2. Spot zoning has not been allowed here or hasn't occurred. And that's what makes it a beautiful place to live. And the people here that are, that live in this neighborhood with myself, we pay dearly in tax money for, for the privilege of living in that neighborhood. And to allow spot zoning really is a slap in the face to the people who pay those taxes. And, and, and there's just nothing positive to add with spot zoning to a neighborhood like this. Nothing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Edmund Ramos? Edmund Ramos? He left. Okay. Sorry, we just picked his ticket for the win. James A. Ferris? Mr. Ferris? Okay.
Jim Ferris, 1130 James Farm Road. I own property adjacent to this parcel. Quite a few old facts that were slightly touched on this evening about this parcel. There have been headaches for 50% of the time I've lived there. I've lived there for 40 years. The first one I'd like to address is the water table. When I moved into this property in 1978, um, my yard flooded at the slightest rainfall. I took actions to ward that off. The elevation in this property in the rear is 16 feet higher than James Farm Road in the center of that property behind me. I'm also the owner, previous owner of the house next door at 1160 James Farm Road. To alleviate this, we didn't do curtain drains. We kept the plantings. And the trees matured and I planted on my property, half my property is covered with pachyssandra. We took down a lot of the smaller trees that were not allowing the trees to mature. We've pretty much got the problem under control in the rear yard. So it doesn't actually flood down to the house and into stone foundations. These homes up there are built in the 30s. They don't have solid concrete foundations. How they're going to alleviate the water coming onto my property and my neighbor's property is beyond me. I have no concept of how they're going to cover that parcel. 30% with asphalt, approximately, maybe more? Hard to see. And where they're going to put and what they're going to do with that water. Most of that water now runs down off of my property, Sikelski's property, into the ditches across the street from James Farm Road, which have some storm drains which were added back, Chris might be able to help with that, 20-plus years ago when they wanted to widen James Farm Road. At that point, they wanted to put sidewalks up James Farm Road and they couldn't do it on the ditch side. They could only do it on our property side, which meant they're going to take by eminent domain the first 20 feet of our one acre parcels. Mr. Sikelski, myself, and Mr. Sturback, who owned the property next door at the time, and eventually owned my property previously, fought it. If any of you know that area, adjoining property to mine, corner of Orin Oak Lane, there's a sidewalk that stops right at my property. It would have put all of us in a waiver situation for anything we wanted to do on our property. A garden shed, a swimming pool, in addition, where with one acre, we come down and get a permit, do what we need to do. So we did fight that successfully. What they did do, they cleaned up James Farm Road on both sides. They put a few more sewers, storm drains in. Again, it all drains down into Roosevelt Forest. So there is a lot of water up there that is somewhat addressed. But the width of James Farm Road, I don't think is 25 feet. Very narrow from that point up to the end of James Farm where it turns and curves down and goes over into Shelton. Below James, uh, below Orin Oak Lane was widened when they cut Surrey Lane in and the other streets that were developed to about 35 feet. So you have room to turn without obstructing traffic. Now, I plowed those three driveways at 1130, 1160, and 1180 James Farm Road. I can't get out of my driveway without the plow on my trucks and make that turn without waiting for traffic coming the other way without the plow on. With the plow on, I have to park a truck, another truck with a blinker on it, to much dismay of the police department and traffic to get in and out of those driveways, especially if it's a difficult storm. As most of you know, the driveways on James Farm Road on our side, the right side, on the even side, come down. The ones on the other side go down into the gulches. It's difficult to work on James Farm Road the way it is. This particular site, and I've been friends with the Sikelskis my entire life, well, my entire life there. Mr. Sikelski Senior is deceased. His son, Michael, is selling the property. When you come around that curve, the rear entrance of Orin Oak condominiums is right there. There's usually a police car parked there, ticketing people because of the speeding going on on James Farm Road. As you come around that curve, you instantly hit that driveway from this property, 1180 James Farm Road. It's right there on the curve. Traffic in the morning, I'm the closest house to Orin Oak Lane. I cannot get out of my driveway between seven, 6:45 and 7:45, 8 o'clock without waiting for eight to 10 cars maybe getting a break as they come around Orin Oak Lane onto James Farm Road. Nobody stops. They're bumper to bumper. You're going to add another 25, minimum, 50 cars trying to make a left or a right out of this development. It's going to be backed up to there. You're going to need a light. You're going to back up. You're going to need a light at Orin Oak Lane. You're going to need a light at this intersection. It's impossible for this development, in my opinion, being there all these years and having to deal with the traffic today. I have to basically come out of my, and tell people thank you as I'm getting the high fives and all the, because I'm pulling a big, big, a couple of big trucks. That's the, the issues on, on that end. The water in our wells, I have a 50-foot deep well. It's very sensitive. We've been poisoned with MTBE for over 25 years from Orin Oak's Golf Course and from the maintenance department with leaking gasoline tanks. Not just me, all the way down James Farm Road, including Judith Terrace where the town put in city water. Instantly, when a gentleman there died of benzene poisoning and brain cancer. Instantly, the water came down the street and everyone was given the choice to hook up if they wanted to. What I'd like to see as a property owner there, we have, not including those two parcels, six more parcels that abut that property, four actually abutting them, two on the corner, that don't have city water. We have septic and well. That area back there is all shale. I've been back there. I've dug back there for many years. They have to blast. The previous developer knew that. They notified us. When I approached the developer of the parcel on 170 Orin Oak Lane, they told me, we'll take care of it. Don't worry about it. We're not going to blast your house away. We're not going to ruin your well. The wells are very sensitive. We have this MTBE issue. It hasn't gone away. It's still there. Orin Oak admitted to the problem, admitted to the cleanup. We test them every year. In the process, the parts per million of this particular chemical, the most In the process, the parts per million of this particular chemical, the most potent chemical in Europe, MTBE, which we were told, don't put in our gasoline, we poison all the well water and all the lakes in the, in the country. In 10 years, it happened in three, and they took it out. I'd like to see some protection, not just for me, but for the 270 wells in this area above the Merritt Parkway. We have no gas, natural gas, we have no water. Septic systems we can live with, but I would like to see at least the adjoining property owners be included in the city water with this project, if and when it should come to fruit. Last thing I'd like to address is my own personal feelings for the development. I think it's obviously not suitable for a four-acre parcel. I think the parcel in the back was 3.5 when they passed the nine houses, I think, which was approved in there. It started at 28, and then 22, and then 11, and I think nine was passed if my recollection is correct. I don't think it can work. I don't think the traffic count can work, and I don't think it should be shoved down this committee and the town's throats and the people that live in this area that have enjoyed this area for so many years. Thank you for your time and for helping us here in Town Street.
Thank you. Peggy Haydo?
Yes. I'm Peggy Haydo from 20 Oranoke Lane. I live on the corner of Oranoke Lane and James Farm Road. So I also have, I have a number of reasons why I don't want this project to go through. One is a safety issue for sure. Now, Lordship, Firehouse and Lordship, they have no difficulty getting out onto the streets. Main Street, they also do not. The Firehouse on Huntington Road, they do not. I see the firemen going out all day long. And if they have to go onto James Farm Road, so in other words, go to that, to the corner, when they come out, take a right, take a right or a left on James Farm Road is not easy now, because they cannot make the turn easily, and especially if there's a car. Cars have to back up. If you have 10 cars or 20 cars or 30 cars backed up, they can't back up. So what happens? The, the fire truck stands there, not, not able to move. We do not need more traffic in that area. I see it all day, I'm retired, I'm home. I see the difficulty that they have getting out. So I guess that's my, my, one of the things I wanted to say. I do believe it's a safety issue for everybody in the north end. If the fire truck's trying to get to your house, they may be held up. Thank you.
Kathy Martinez? Martinez, sorry. Couldn't make out the Z in the end.
My name is Kathy Martinez, live at 800 James Farm Road. I'm against this zoning change that is before us. It is a privilege to live where we live. We pay lots in taxes. I don't believe that the size of what they want to put in complements the size of what we have, the one acre for the one house. The 960 square feet, I think, was what per house was, is really a very small size home. I think that they're trying to squeeze in as much as they can into a small area to get the maximum output of what they can get. It's very, very tight living space with this type of square footage per home. Also, this is, James Farm Road is not a low-volume road. I live on James Farm, I see it left and right coming out of my driveway. It is a high-volume road. There's lots going up and down those roads. Sometimes you're traveling at speeds of 40, 50, or 60 miles an hour. It is a high-volume road, it's a high-speed road. It parallels Main Street, it supports the Sikorsky traffic, it supports the traffic that's coming from Armstrong Road, those businesses up there. It supports Chapel Street with the buses, it supports flood, and it also supports Bynell buses also. So this is a lot of volume going back and forth. Also, if we're talking about how this might accommodate the elderly population, a second floor isn't accommodatable for an elderly person. More for a one-level home versus a second-floor, third-floor home. So I don't think that that kind of fits for the elderly population if that's what we're considering this perhaps for. Also with the affordable housing part of this too. So with, with buses, the public services are not up there either. So that's like another consideration that we don't have those services that come up to that area of the road, or up to that area of the, of where we live. So I would really hope that you consider my words of what I'm saying to apply to not allowing this to go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Merrill Pruitt with the Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford, and I live at 575 Peters Lane. I agree with the gentleman earlier about this area being zoned properly. It's the natural area in Stratford, it's one of the last areas of open space. Nothing positive for the people in the area that are living there now, and there wouldn't be that much positive for the people that would be brought into this situation where there aren't any amenities. They can't even walk anywhere for a loaf of bread or, or a gallon of milk. The traffic problems are going to be huge. I see it all the time. I'm out there on the roads, I walk, I drive up and down James Farm Road myself. I see it at all different times of night and day. And you can barely take a left or a right on that road half the time. And so there's going to be a lot of, of problems with that, and people are going to be terribly inconvenienced, and especially for the, however long it takes them to build such a huge project, including sewers and water lines, and the disruption to the whole entire area for that is just ridiculous. There's also the threat to pollution to wells. And of course, everybody knows that I'm very concerned about the wildlife and Roosevelt Forest and how much it's going to displace. I go on websites all the time looking at Connecticut critters and Connecticut birds in the area, and I see all sorts of alarmed neighbors about the fact that foxes, oh, the fox was up here on the road just today, oh, the coyote crossed my front yard. Well, when they lose this, again, another forested area in this area where the animals are, it's a direct pathway for them to Roosevelt Forest, and there are places for them to live and to breed and find food. It's going to be quite a detriment to our, our population in the wildlife area and those that are threatened by it. The, the noise level increase is going to be huge. These are very private people, we're very private people there and quiet, and we enjoy the nature, and all of these kinds of things are going to change. It'll never be the same, you'll never be able to get it back, and it'd be a shame to lose
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Susan Strazza. I live at 15 Oranoke Lane, right on the corner of James Farm and Oranoke. I just want to say I'm opposed for numerous reasons, as others before me said, taxes, our wells. We do not have sidewalks up there, or we have sidewalks, but they just totally end. And for a long time, there's no place to walk because there's no sidewalk. We're not on a bus line. The wildlife is amazing. If you've ever heard coyotes at night, it's so awesome. It's unbelievable. I totally disagree with the traffic expert. Right on the corner, I can see cars that don't stop, they fly through the stop signs, constant, you know, road rage. It's, it's a cut-through for Sikorsky. And they just speed. I don't know if he counted accidents, the car coming up Oranoke, going through the house right on the corner, it was something else, totally different. And it's just, I don't think they took into account any of the traffic that's there. It's, it's unbelievable. But I just wanted to say that I'm opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Vivian Batista, and I live at 65 Coach House Road, which is about a block down from Oranoke and James Farm intersection. And I'm opposed to the property because, well, multiple reasons, I agree with a lot of the people who've already spoken. There's quite a bit of congestion in a small lot of land, and the spaces or the housing seems a little bit small, but there's also the water issues back, going back to that. Now, our property is flat, and we had a couple months ago, or maybe not even a couple months ago, we had a day of rain. That was it. But it was constant rain for one day. Now, the land in this area doesn't soak up the water, it pools. And after, like, half of the day, we started getting water into our basement. Now, other neighbors have also had that, and we've had to go and dig holes and trench and everything like that to start getting the gutters and veering the water away from the houses to some degree. But the thing is, it's not just in the houses, it's on the road. If you go and pay attention to how these roads, the amount of traffic on these roads, the reality is that to some degree, the lesser traffic is because of people who know these routes. You would end up seeing in bad weather conditions, people park at the end of their driveway so they don't have to deal with the slope because the ice stays. When we've got a winter with a lot of snow, all those gutters that go and drain the water get covered. The road gets smaller. And people pretty much slow down. We do have the wildlife. We have wild turkeys, we've got coyotes, we've got wives, or foxes, we have wolves, and we have bobcats and deer, which we see on a regular basis. It is not uncommon to see, when the turkeys are crossing the road, everybody stops and lets them through, and yes, the cars back up, but we enjoy that. We don't want to have them killed, and we've had a lot of accidents. I, I know, I remember one because of ice that went from the corner straight into the living room of the house that goes at that intersection and went straight through their living room when their daughter had just left the room like 10 minutes before, and scared the heck out of them. There's been other accidents because the fact is that on Oranoke Lane, there is an adult services from St. Vincent, and their handicap-oriented vehicle goes up and down James Farm Road on a regular basis, stops everybody. And it has stopped and caused accidents, because I know of a couple people who ended up stopped behind and crashed in and taken to the hospital as a result. So there are a lot more things than what you're hearing because of the fact that it's being generalized, I think. But if you start looking at some of the data, yes, some of those guardrail accidents and everything like that are due to bad conditions, and depends on the winter to some degree. We've had a mild one so far, but in previous years, we've had that road get almost down to a one-lane road because of snow, and it piles up on all sides, and the ice stays, and the sidewalks get covered with ice, and it stays. So it doesn't really melt away. So there's a few other little factors that I think you should hear about and consider. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to apologize ahead of time. Ellen Schirba Orzy? All right, we'll go with Carrie. That's why I apologized ahead of time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ellen Schirba Carrie, and I live at 365 Peters Lane, and I'm part of Roosevelt Forest, and I am a treasure of the concerned citizens. I do believe in affordable housing, but not in our area, okay? I love our little neighborhood. My one big concern is James Farm Road is not a wide road. How are these people who are going to be living, they're going to get out of that road, whether small vehicles, big vehicles, okay? Even if there's emergency fire trucks going out. I know there's a lot of traffic during work hour, excuse me, when we get out of work, and from Sikorsky, from the Sinto Development. When I turn onto my street, I'm coming home from work, sometimes it takes me a while. So I totally oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Name's Walter P. Remcunis, reside at 425 Second Avenue, 10 miles that way from this project. But I have relatives that live in that area, so I am familiar with it. First of all, this was designated a long time ago as a one-acre piece of property minimum when you bought it to build your house. And everybody who bought up there went along with that idea. It's a lot of rock and stuff too, that's part of the property. So I can understand why this gentleman down in Florida, who wants to buy this property, I figured all he wants to do is make a fast buck, but it is going to destroy this one-acre RS1 district. It's spot zoning, like they've been trying for a couple other times, spot zoning, which should not be. So far, I haven't heard too much. All I hear is we want to make a change so we can do away with the regulations here for a one-acre prop, so we're going to change it to Oranoke District, Village District. What the heck are they going to do? There is no, nothing been presented that I, I saw or heard, what it is going to contain? What is the Oranoke Village District? What is it? I don't know. He does, I don't. It's just a gimmick to get away from the zoning laws within the town. I looked at this little map, it's kind of hard for me to read it, but I say it, this is just a bunch of cluster housing area. 25 people in 2.7 acres. That's a heck of a lot of building. Too much for that little area. He said it's going to be three stories, the cellar and two up on the top with the three bedrooms. Three bedrooms, you're not going to buy a three-bedroom house if you're not going to lose two, if not three. You're going to be mother, father, and one to two kids. That's going to be at least three cars. That's a heck of a lot of cars going up and down that little one, one entrance and exit into this property. One entrance, that's a lot of cars into this property. What about water? I know they got water over in the Oranoke section, but is there any water within the close area up here? If they come down Oranoke, they've got quite a ways to go in yet to bring their water in. That's, that's another one to think about. Another one to think about, sewage. I haven't heard too much, nothing about it, maybe you heard better than me, but I haven't heard about sewage. Are they going to have wells? A septic system of some big septic system? Are they going to have wells, septic system of some big septic system? It don't look that way. It looks like heck. For a small area in that group up there is a no-no. I think you tried to fight it before, maybe you're doing it, gonna do it again, I hope. Orinok Road is an access off of the parking lot of Sikorsky's. That place starts about 6:00 and it runs all the way on up until 6:00 at night or more, constantly, because they staggered a system of starting over there of shifts changes. You've got a hell of a lot of traffic coming down Orinok and it's going to hit James Farm Road, which is not that big to handle that. There's a lot of cars going up there. I don't know where they're just guiding the traffic with, but you go try to go up there around the business hours. You go around 6:30, you go on to 9:00, then you go on, start again about 3:00 in the afternoon and run on up through. As the man says, where are you going to put the snow? As Mr. Hendricks says, I give him credit for that. Where are you going to put the snow? You've got the houses there so fast, you don't have that much of a road to clear. But you've got to, where are you going to put it? How far apart are these houses? It's a big cluster, one after the other, bing, 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 bing. You've got breathing room between, I don't know, four feet, five feet between the buildings? I don't know. You seem to come in here, they're ready to build, but they don't tell you what they're going to do with the property. There's a lot of things to be checked out. And people are talking about the water table. That's a big water table up there because of the rock underneath, substructure, and that water comes down from the top, up on top of Orinok and down through. You look at them, you look at that gutter or culvert, whoever you want to call it, on James Farm Road, that's, it's big. Why? Because there's a lot of water coming down. You get a day like we had a couple days here, the heavy rains, there's a lot of water going down through. And that place is going to be, there would have been either a big mud puddle up there or it all goes down James Farm. I just say, look at it twice, tell the people to come back with some other ideas. This is cluster housing. Too many houses for the little area that they want to build. Think about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward.
I live at 740 James Farm Road. I'm sure you people are aware that there's several, I'm sure there's, you're aware that there are several projects that have come before this board for James Farm Road. Right across from my house, they want to put 116 units in, affordable housing. To the left of my house, they want to put 12 units in a property that's about one acre. Down the street now, 25 more. What, where's it going to stop? And it's the same people, I see the same lawyers, the same people all trying to do these projects. It's nowhere beneficial to the town. It's beneficial to the builders. To put four units or five units of affordable housing, why don't they make the whole project affordable, not profitable? So I'm definitely against this. And as far as the traffic, I can't get out of my driveway in the morning anywhere from 7:00 to 9:00. And the same thing at night, I have to sit there. The project cross-street's going to put a street right in front of my house. I asked you before, I says, do I have to put a traffic light to get out of my own driveway? The area doesn't call for such congestion. James Farm Road is horrific. The traffic is bad, constantly. There's speeders, there's people flying through, it's not safe for the children, there's no sidewalks for them to walk on, the kids, the school's at the corner, they can't walk to school. So I'm definitely against this project. I wish you would consider denying it. Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Please step forward.
John Hockter, 615 James Farm Road.
Would you repeat your name again?
John Hockter.
Spell it, please.
I'm concerned about the increase in traffic from this project. There is already a lot of traffic and even though the speed limit is supposed to be 25 miles an hour, people go well above the speed limit. When I go up to get my mail, I'm always concerned about getting hit. And I, when cars, when a cluster of cars come by, I back off and wait until the cars are gone before I, I collect my mail. So again, I'm concerned about even more cars, more traffic, more speeders and more potential safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition?
My name is Lynn Pert and I live about a mile and a half away from the area that's in discussion tonight. And I choose to go down James Farm Road when I need to head up that way because it is, despite the busyness, there's still a quality of ruralness and I believe in preserving and protecting what little we do have left. So I would just like to speak my opposition about developing this area any more than it is. Thank you.
Could we have your address, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry. 100 Fairchild Road.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sandy Higgs. I live at 280 James Farm Road. I won't keep you any longer. I oppose this for all of the reasons that everyone has said before. Yes, the traffic, I'm worried about trucks, there are school buses, there's people coming down, they use it as a secondary road from all of the Shelton Corporate Parks. People are trying to get around Sikorsky on Main Street and James Farm Road is the road that they choose to use. I also have a well that I am very worried about. It's a shallow well and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition?
My name is Maria Staltero. I've been in my house 40 years.
Spell your last name, please.
Staltero, S-T-A-L-T-A-R-O. When I moved in my house was 1979. There was hardly any traffic. Now the traffic is enormous. I lived the second house on Orinok Lane and the traffic, some of them don't even stop, they just go. And I oppose it for the same reason, because I have a well water and I'm afraid for the well and the septic tank. And I oppose it for the traffic and all the other reasons that everybody has said. Thank you.
Could we have your address, ma'am? Could we just have your address for the record?
55 Orinok Lane.
Hello. My name is Ray Hanson, 1295 James Farm Road. My house is opposite North Gate, right next to the property you're considering approving. I find it real difficult to get out of our private road onto James Farm Road, especially during the rush hour in the morning or at night. Unfortunately, there's a slight curve there. People tend to speed, say 40 miles an hour or so, and once I pull out onto the road, they're right on my tail. I've almost had a couple accidents. Not only that, there's wildlife in the area. I, not recently, but probably 10 years ago, had a deer get hit on James Farm Road, onto my property. So there is wildlife, that's a concern. The proposed 25 units or so is going to generate a lot of school kids, meaning there's going to be a pickup, several pickups, depending upon the age of the kids, by buses. It's a real bottleneck when the school buses are in action, both morning and afternoon. People, there's a lot of traffic, again, early in the morning or late at night when people are getting out of work. Being I'm close by, I'm a little concerned to have that many houses imposing upon what I consider my privacy. I bought the property wanting to show, say retire in an area that I could enjoy. I'm not going to enjoy having 25 houses generating a whole lot of kids running around the neighborhood. I just oppose to it. And one other thought, I don't know if I should bring it up, but if you put this 25 units in, the property values on my house are going to be going down. Is the town of Stratford going to reassess my property and lower it?
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, I would like to, hold on, Mr. Cubic, I would also offer, like to offer anybody who is here in favor of this project. Anyone in favor? Oh, okay. You got up, I was asking. Seeing none, Mr. Cubic, the floor is yours now.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to request that we be allowed to present in February. Attorney Kelly is also present here. We have experts that are planning to come in February. We were under the impression that we would present as we have in all the other applications. Applicant goes first and then we are allowed a few weeks later to oppose. I can tell you that I understand amended plans were filed today. We haven't had a chance to see them. Our experts certainly haven't had a chance to see them. We have likely a traffic count coming that was intended to be ready for February. So under the impression that we were going to be continuing with this till February, I'd like to see that that actually happened. That's my request.
Okay, so you or Mr. Kelly are not prepared to go forward tonight?
We could, I could start, but I don't have my experts.
Give Kevin his 30 seconds.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin Kelly of Kevin Kelly &amp; Associates, representing the town of Stratford, for the record. Yes, that is correct, particularly in light of the fact that there are amendments or there's an amended revised application. It would be against due process to not allow us an opportunity to review that and to be adequately versed and therefore we would request the continuance to the February 13th date.
February, we can probably continue it onto the 27th.
Just for the record, it's Joe Cubic with Harlow Adams &amp; Friedman for Concerned Citizens Group of Stratford.
Okay, thank you. I would like to end the public hearing part of it for the citizens and just start off with you guys next month and if we can wrap it up that night, I'd really appreciate it.
That's fair.
Mr. Bell, if we can get an extension from you and you will have time to rebut at that evening?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for the record, there's no, there hasn't been any new application or amended application. The application's been the same in this case. What the engineer said in his testimony is that there were comments from the town engineer that he addressed, but this, this application's been the same application that I filed.
Was there anything that he changed in the, from the original onto the amended section that he gave us?
He made changes in response to the town's comments, either a conservation or perhaps your town engineer, Mr. Casey, but the application was never amended. It's the same application.
Okay, I'll still let them have a chance to go over whatever.
That's your call, but I just wanted to make it clear that nothing, that hasn't happened.
All right, thank you. So we can get an extension and you will rebut after then?
I would rebut after then.
Thank you, gentlemen. Continue to, I need a motion to continue this to next month. Motion by Mr. Hendricks, second by Ms. Manus. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Is that going to be the 27th?
I need a motion to end the public hearing. Motion by Mr. Solhavy, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, why don't we take a three-minute break to let the crowd disperse?